Evening and welcome to the Lee County Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could have a moment of silence, please. Now if you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is actually one of our favorite times, believe it or not, and that is when we get to hear from the public. I will remind you, you have a three-minute limit, and if you could address all your concerns to the board, and if there's anything that needs to be addressed immediately, our superintendent is sitting right over there to your left. So the very first, well, the only one we have is Fred MacIver.
Good afternoon. Can y'all hear me very well? Okay, I'm gonna use less than three minutes, okay? My name is Fred MacIver, or McIver, however you want to pronounce it, doesn't matter. I had a great English teacher, Ms. Edna Earl Yarborough, who taught me great English, okay? I reside at 3205 Windmere Drive here in Sanford, North Carolina. I currently am retired from the pharmaceutical industry, and I coached girls and boys tennis along with Ms. Vicki Wilkie here at Southern Lee High School, where Ms. Poston and her staff have then graciously allowed me to use and do my mentoring programs. I mentor young boys, primarily seniors, sometimes a couple of juniors here and there. Tonight, I'm coming before you because in the process of teaching the young men that I have, and also things that go on within the community, I would like for you guys and young lady, Ms. Chairwoman, Ms. Formack, to consider if so. If not, it's okay, but I just want to bring this to your attention. I'd like to see, is it possible to add a vocational course to our schools, and also a life course? What I'm seeing in the vocational part here is that we have a lot of young men here, particularly a lot in my group, they're not going to be engineers, they're not going to be Rhodes Scholars, they are going to be mechanics, they're gonna be construction workers, HVAC systems, what for Duke Power, et cetera. And a lot of times when they are with me and they're trying hard, and you got these courses lined, they're set up for people where you're taking algebra, calculus, and all of that, they feel left out. They don't feel that they even have a chance, so they start to give up. And that's where I come in, and I reassure them that you can make it, we can try, we can do this right here, let me get you across that stage, and let me graduate with your class. Now, I go to summer school and graduate, but graduate with your class, because that is a beautiful thing. And so I work on doing that, and each one of them always come to me every year since I've been doing this right here. I want to go, I want to take HVAC, I want to be a mechanic. And there's just nothing for them to go directly into because of the path line. So when I see in the state of California where now they have stopped production of electrical cars because of the lack of mechanics, where that tells me right there, this coming right here with Vinfast right here in Sanford, okay? So I would like to see you consider that. And the other thing is life class. So many of the kids, they need to learn how to fill out a checkbook, they need to learn, they need to learn how to read a contract, they need to learn how to sit down across from the table with each other and talk and discuss something, and yet have your differences and still work it out. Everything is just on the phone right now, what they do. And I'm sure most of you and I, myself, we have been in grocery stores, we buy an item, and it's, I think, twenty dollars, twenty dollars and fifty cents, nineteen dollars and fifty cents, you give them twenty dollars and fifty cents, they completely lose it. So I just feel like they, this would help our kids here in Lee County. So if possible, I would like for you to consider that, and I thank each and every one of you tonight, okay?
Thank you.
You do.
Yeah, the vision statement.
Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovation, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Code of Ethics. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest in the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board, avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board, avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Next, before we go to approve the agenda, there's one item that is missing, and it will be after the financial report, and that will be our attorney update. Now we head to the non-action items or announcements, and the next is the Finance Department Award presentation.
Madam Chair, point of order, don't we need to approve the agenda first?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, in the minutes, you're right. All right, next thing we need to do is to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda is amended.
It's amended, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I think that was in favor.
That was in favor, right, Patrick?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, and next we have the approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Patrick, is that okay? Oh, okay, the motion passes. Okay, next we have the announcements and reports, non-action items, we have the Finance Department Award Presentation, Dr. Bryan.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask our Kelly Jones, head of our Finance Department, and the members of our Finance Department, come forward if they would. As they're coming forward, each year the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada awards a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. We received that, this is for the 2021 school year, and the CAFER, which sort of collects information about our school district and what we do, was awarded for its, for its spirit, quote, "spirit of full disclosure." And very, very excited that they won that award, and then also, they were awarded the Financial Reporting Award, which talks about the program's high standards for financial reporting transparency, and Certificates of Excellence for comprehensive annual financial report. I'd like to ask Ms. Jones to come forward just to accept this recognition, and also to recognize the members of her Finance Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan, thank you, members of the Board. With us tonight, we have Ms. Jackie Tyler, we have Wendy Godfrey, we have Jordan Allred, we have Terri Spivey, we have Kim Smith, and we have Tanya MacIver, and we appreciate this, thank you so much.
Thank you for what you all continue to do in support of Lee County Schools. You have a mighty lift, and we appreciate the work you do tirelessly, year after year.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Chairman's Report, and there's a lot to report on in reference to our School Board and the training that we have done. We're in the process of looking at the Superintendent's reevaluation process. I'm extremely proud of the Board and all the way that they have been attending training, and our lawyer will be discussing that earlier, where we talk about the training and what we can and cannot do as far as for Board development. I've reached out to the North Carolina School Board Association, and also with the North Carolina School of Government, they provided us a book free of charge, which is pretty amazing, and also alerted the North Carolina School Board Association that we will most likely not be providing the $4,000 to $5,000 funding for their lobbying purposes. And we talked extensively with the School Board Association about classes that is highly recommended for the Board of Education. Some of those classes that I felt like we were possibly lacking in had to do with finance. And with that being said, the one thing I definitely feel like that I have to report on, because we're all about transparency, and something came to our attention this morning from the Superintendent, and recent information about our school system finances raised some very important questions about our physical methods and controls. Just four years ago, our system was cited in consecutive annual audits for lack of physical controls, leading to delays in completing the annual audit. There were findings in the audit that cited problems with the fund balance and questionable transfer of funds, transfers that were never briefed to the School Board prior to the audit. Now it seems we're going through the same similar problems, stemming from our conversion from one account system to another during the last fiscal year. Our new Board, sworn in just three months ago, was never informed about delays or any other issues in completing our most recent financial audit. Yet we have just learned from the auditor that our previous chair signed off and authorized a delay in completing the audit for 2021-22 budget year in late November of 2022. Our auditor was compelled to make note of this delay, not our first time, and in his draft official audit for the Lee County Schools, it is the auditor's duty to note these briefings so the Board is aware of the need to improve physical controls within our system. Now, it may well be that our, our conversion, we went from something called Sunpac Accounting System to Link System, that that was possibly a cause for the problematic delay in auditing our books as it was necessary, but the question is, why wasn't the School Board informed of these problems? In particular, why didn't the Finance Committee know? It is the job of the Superintendent and the Finance Committee to keep this Board informed about all consequential matters such as this. It reflects poorly on all of us when we hear from these issues directly from the auditor. We had a long conversation today, and he will be here in April to answer all of the Board's questions in reference to some of the findings. I apologize to the Board directly that you got some of the documentation near the end, but I'm one who believes that bad news does not get better with time. These surprises are not acceptable here, and they're not acceptable in any professional organization. Because this is the second occurrence of an audit discovered problems in our school system in the last five years, I'm losing confidence in our ability to act as physical stewards of our school finances. I'm requesting that we bring the auditor in for our April 2023 Board Meeting and detail any concerns he may have with our budget documentation, ballot sheets, and reconciliations. In the interim, I ask this Board to order the Finance Officer to complete the electronic transfer of bank reconciliations and the general ledger document to the auditor so that he can perform an analysis of our books to ensure we have no budget violations or improper transfers. We need to be assured at our next meeting that we are fully in compliance with the law. I'm also compelled to ask that this Board, visit the Board's financial policies, that would be you, Mr. Castor, financial policies, to determine why we keep getting surprised with these audit findings. We need to be updated on our policies to ensure all Board members, all Board members are fully aware of every financial challenge our school system is facing. This must never happen again. I would also like to say during the time that I've spoke with our auditor, it appears that our audit, the contract for our auditor is probably up at this time as well, so I would like someone to look into that and have that at your next finance meeting, if possible. But other than that, I'm done. Dr. Bryan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start off, ask Dr. Waller to come forward, please. We are very excited to have our Warren Williams School here tonight, and Dr. Waller, if you could recognize our Clean School of the Month. Thank you.
I would like Ms. Huffer and her staff to come forward as we recognize Warren Williams this month as our Clean School Award winner with 99%.
Wow.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, and I do have to say that it's all thanks to Mr. Box. We could not be prouder and more humble to have such a great gentleman working with our preschoolers and making sure that our school is a clean learning environment. This gentleman just went through knee surgery, and we miss him dearly. And, and within a month of coming back, he got us back in track. So thank you so much, Mr. Box. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. Care to bring more?
Yes.
Several announcements tonight, Madam Chair. First off, I'd like to congratulate again Kirby Forbes, math teacher, Lee County High School, NCCAT Beginning Teacher of the Year, and actually, they will be, they will be coming here on May 9th to actually award her with that recognition, so we're very excited about that. Lee County Schools will be having a spring job fair, March 25th, at our central office, recruiting certified and classified staff, and very excited about that. Last couple of weeks, we've celebrated social workers and maintenance workers for all their efforts that they put forward for us. Our maintenance workers take care of our schools and keep them in working order, and our social workers, I think, do a great job in working with our students and families, particularly with all of the stressors that are out there right now, and I think they do an awesome job with that. So just want to recognize both those groups of folks. Kindergarten registration started yesterday, and that can be done online or in person at schools, so it's whatever someone wants to do, convenient for them, and we're excited to get our rising class of kindergarteners ready to go for that. Thursday, and I will send y'all a notice about this, just to remind you, at Greenwood Elementary, be celebrating the Science Olympiad for our elementary schools, and it's a great event during the morning, so we're very excited about that, and make sure you have information about that. We've had several student competitions going on the last couple of weeks, our DECA program at the high schools have been competing at state level, and also our local quiz bowl, and they did an outstanding job with that. This is also Youth Art Month, and we have a lot of Lee County Schools' art on display at the Mann Center here in town, and that'll be on display actually through Thursday, 9 to 4 each day, so if you want to see some Lee County Schools' art. And also, Lee County Schools will be performing at the Department of Public Instruction, W.B. Wicker Elementary School Chorus, Dance, and Theater will be doing a presentation there in the coming week as well. So we're always very excited when our students get an opportunity to go outside the district to show off their skills and talent, and they do, do an awesome job with that. Our High School Course Selection Guide is out, I know you all have a copy of that, and that's been put out electronically, but it's also something that I think is worth looking at if you get a chance. Heard Ms. Davidson talk about that a lot, about different things that are out there that we, we offer for students, and it's really important across, across the Board, and I'll actually come back to that in just a minute. In the next Board Meeting, we'll be recognizing four students, I won't spoil the surprise, but we have four students who have been allowed to go to Governor's School, so very excited about that, we'll be recognizing them at the next Board Meeting. Coach Reggie Peace from Lee County High School was recognized for the Wooden Legacy Award this past weekend, North Carolina High School Athletic Association Awards, and as everybody knows, Coach Peace is a legendary figure as a coach and mentor, and well deserved to be recognized with the Wooden Legacy Award. And just last week, I had a meeting with the Community College, and got a look at some of their new offerings they have for dual enrollment, very excited about that, one of which is electrical vehicles. And putting together, they've put together a program that will allow certification credential that would come out of that, and it would be offered for the coming year, so we're certainly excited about all the new things and all the things going on within our schools. And, Madam Chair, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a financial update.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, you have before you the COVID reports that we typically give, the line item COVID report by PRC. We also have the graphs that had been asked for, and I believe Susan has provided you with an additional page that Mr. Rommel had requested for the summary of COVID expenses from the month of January with the amounts as well.
Any Board members have any questions?
So I guess I don't necessarily have a specific question for tonight, but I do appreciate Kelly, the extra work to get the, the numbers to go with the list. And then, just, I guess, for the rest of the Board's information, I did send a couple of specific questions, just about a few of these line items, and essentially how we tie them to the COVID funding, and then, once COVID funding is no longer available, how we fund those things, just because the descriptions here, I just had some questions. So I spoke with Dr. Bryan, and we will discuss that Thursday at our finance meeting, if that's all right.
I thought you had questions in reference to which ones pertain to COVID dollars.
Yes.
Is that for Thursday?
Yep.
Okay.
Because it was, it wasn't a huge list, it was, what, five or six, something like that.
Alrighty. Alright, that'll be all, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our Board Attorney. And he's coming up to help discuss, we're talking about Board Development and Training, and then we're required yearly to go over the Superintendent Evaluation and Contract. The evaluation part is in closed session, the remainder is in open session, so that's why he's here today. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, on the question of training, I know there was a question about Board members accessing virtual training and as a way of maintaining efficiencies and costs with the Board, attending virtual trainings together as a group, and whether that would be a problem from an open meetings standpoint, and it has been my guidance to the Board that, with one caveat, which I'll get to, no, that is not a problem, that Board members, in the same way you could go to an organization that's providing training and sit at a table together and receive that training without it being an open meeting, you can sit in front of a computer screen and receive that virtual training without it being an open meeting. I will note, and I have noticed, noted this too, Madam Chair, that it's obviously essential, if that is occurring, that absolutely no Board business be discussed if there is a quorum of Board members present to watch and observe, to take part in that training. So it's essential for the public that they know, even as you meet, to take that training, that you are not discussing Board members, you're not deliberating on any Board decisions, you're not applying the training in any way that would necessarily be part of an open meeting here as the Board, but other than that, there is no open meetings restriction on you attending a virtual training in the same room together.
What if it's non-virtual? For instance, if you came and gave us a class together on ethics?
Yeah, so, so again-
I just want the clarification.
Yeah, they're receiving it from me, from an outside professional, again, as long as you are receiving training in the same way that you could sit at a table and at a conference, that's not a problem. What you cannot do is engage in deliberations of the Board, and that would include asking specific advice. For example, if I give you training, and then you ask me for legal advice around a specifically Lee County-based Board issue, that would be a problem, and I would have to defer that, and I would, if that were to happen in such a training. And I would say to you, I'm sorry, I can't answer that right now, that is something to ask me in a closed session during a properly noticed Board Meeting. But as far as receiving the training, that would not be an open meeting issue. Great, okay. The second item that I was asked to update, and I think there's some, a couple of slides just for visualization on this, was around the Superintendent's Contract and just transparency around the compensation that is provided there. Is that, I have it on a flash drive if we need it. Oh, there it is. Okay. And so this is just a summary received from the Finance Office that's just put into a slide so that folks can visualize it about the elements of the Superintendent's Contract. The first item there is the salary, which is a state-based salary schedule, a local supplement on top of that, and then longevity, which is based on a formula, those total the number that you see there, a little under $167,000. This is for the 2021-22 school year, because that is the last completed fiscal year that we have available, obviously, we're in the middle of- Obviously, we're in the middle of the 22-23 fiscal year. Reimbursements were categorized there in the superintendent's contract. There is travel reimbursement provision, there is a reimbursement for leave days that are not used and that are carried over from year to year that can be paid out at the end of each year, as well as a reimbursement on retirement, which totals a little under $30,000, as you see there. There are matching contributions that are part of that contract that relate to Social Security, retirement contributions that the board agrees to match. I think it's 4% is the number in the contract, up to that number if the superintendent elects to move portions of his salary directly into a qualifying retirement fund. And the 457 is a specific type of withholding fund as well. And those are matched by the board under the contract. That comes to a little under $60,000 for the year that is here. The insurance payments include your regular benefits for local board employees, health, dental, and vision. It also includes as part of the contract, payments for family premiums when requested for the 21-22 school year. That was a little over $12,500. There is a cell phone that is covered as part of the superintendent's contract that is just under $50 a month, and comes out then to just under $600 for the year. And that total package, if my math was correct, and I don't do math anymore, I do law, is I'm happy to try to answer questions, but again, finance isn't my forte.
If I may, Madam Chair, real quick. I just had, I guess, a question. So, looking at the way that you've itemized there, I know there's a specific allowance in the contract for a monthly automobile allowance in the amount of $1,000 per month. And then, there's also a provision for, so, membership charges that include, like, professional organizations, things like that, and it just, you know, upon board approval, would be reimbursed. I didn't know if any of those things are captured in these, or...
So, the reimbursement, as I have, and again, I just did this the way it made sense to me, to keep it from being this long. But the travel that's referred right there is that $1,000 a month. I don't know, year to year, how much of that is accessed, but that is straight out of the contract, comes to $12,000 for the year. The memberships, the information I have is there aren't any that have been accessed by the superintendent, but that is part of the contract if he were to do so. So, I do not believe these numbers include any of that, because I don't think there are any such expenses for that school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And then, if we can go to the next slide, which is the last slide, I keep my PowerPoint short. There have been requests from the board for periodic updates on bond forfeitures, and just an idea of what it is that we do as a law firm for this and what that produces for the board. I've already done the long explanation of bond forfeitures, so unless you ask a question, I'm not going to do that again. But this is just a very simple table of what the board was billed by my firm, either because of my work or because of the paralegals who do a lot of the work in terms of tracking the bond forfeitures and working with the clerk's office to make sure that we're keeping up and making sure the bail agents and the sureties are producing the proper paperwork. When they don't, we chase them down, and if we get the extra paperwork, we generally try to charge them for the time that we have spent, so that the board does not pay out of pocket for their mistakes. And some of that is reflected here in the collections. The other piece, obviously, if they cannot produce the appropriate paperwork, we will go to court. And you'll see several of the months that are a little bit higher, those are the months that I've gone to court, right, when I have to come down here to Sanford and spend a couple of hours in court. But typically, I think, as I reported three or four months ago, when this first came up, a good ballpark is about $1,000 a month that we spend to make sure that y'all are getting what you're supposed to get out of the bond forfeitures. As I said at the time, it does vary pretty widely, depending on who's writing what bonds and who did what that they weren't supposed to on Friday night. So, sometimes it's as much as $13,000 a month, sometimes it's as little as three. But this gives you a sense of what you're spending for the compliance and the oversight that we do, and then what we're making sure you get. I don't want to oversell this as all our labor in terms of the collections, because some bail agents, sureties just pay what they're supposed to. But we also think there's two things that happen. One is when we catch people not doing what they're supposed to do or not filing the appropriate paperwork, we make sure that y'all get compensated for that. But then, two is because we have put in place these checks and balances to follow up on these things, a lot of money that might not come in if there were less strict oversight does come in automatically. So, that gives you a sense. But I think in terms of the number I gave you a few months ago, it was about two to three to one in terms of what we would say is directly a result of our work versus what you pay. And then, the totals come to more like seven or eight to one in terms of the overall collections versus expenses.
So, you say in your, what you've been paid, correct?
I like to think so, but ultimately, that's for y'all to decide.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Any questions on that?
And that concludes my report, Madam Chair, unless there are questions.
That's really good information, because, I mean, I'm just trying to add from the screen, and I come to ballpark $6,900 worth of cost for $54,000 in return. I'd like to have that kind of investment return.
ROI.
Yep. So, thank you.
Well, I appreciate you providing those monthly updates for us when you can.
Of course.
And it helps. Now, we are going to our committee reports. We will start with curriculum and instruction. We had no meeting, but you chose one of the next one.
Yes, Madam Chair. Curriculums and instruction did not meet between our meetings, but we are meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, March 15th, 3:30 PM at Southern Lee High School. That concludes my report.
Facilities and Technology.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report's a bit long, so bear with me. So, Facilities and Technology met on February 28th, and we had several things to discuss. So, the first thing on the agenda was we had a general discussion about the Jonesboro School property that is out kind of in the Walmart area. So, the bulk of this conversation was just related to future use of the property. So, just to give the board a bit of information, the buildings on that school property, which are the old Jonesboro School, are all in pretty rough shape. They contain asbestos. There's been issues over the years with trespassing and issues that come along with that. So, demolition of those buildings has been discussed in the past between superintendent and our previous county manager. And Dr. Bryan has renewed those conversations with the new county manager, and pardon me, I don't know her name. But basically, the advice there was to add this project, which would be the demolition of those buildings, to the capital budget request as a special allocation. Quotes are being gathered currently for that purpose. And then, once that's completed and we have the quotes, a resolution would be needed from the board to the county commissioners to request the funding to proceed with that demolition. With the site clear, we can have more discussion about what to do with that property in the future. Couple of examples would be, you know, new building or maintenance facilities, perhaps. We could sell the property. So, basically, anything's on the table, but removal of these old buildings needs to happen. So, at this time, there's no action required by the board. This is just kind of like a for information thing. So, the next thing we discussed was social media access over school Wi-Fi. That item is listed under New Business for full board consideration, so I won't get into that one during this report. We did discuss capacity planning briefly at our meeting. So, I guess the short story there is we do have a draft spreadsheet that can take the data provided from the county planning office and break down student enrollment and growth projections into, basically, we'll call it a short and a long-term bucket. And then, also, we can break down at the levels of individual school attendance zones and by grade level, so like elementary, middle, high. So, the plan there is to meet again with Don Kavaskits soon and finalize that spreadsheet and get it populated with the relevant information, so that we can kind of look at what we've seen going a bit into the past and then run it out into the future. So, I will say the hope there is that we have a draft proposal to bring to the board in April, but don't hold me to that. I think originally, I said by May, I should have something for you guys, so we'll see how that goes. So, the next thing is ClearTouch interactive panels. So, Rebecca Misimer and Rebel Hunter did a really great job for us gathering quotes and laying out their selection process for a vendor to provide these to us. That info is contained in the agenda packet for everybody's review. So, a little bit of information there, these monitors are to replace aging smart boards, which are greater than 10 years old. It uses federal Title I money, which is money provided to schools and districts with high percentage of students from low-income families. This contract is for a total of 71 panels at a cost of $281,537.01. And that does include the hardware, so the panel itself, the software, the setup, the configuration, basically, it'll be handed over to us, ready to turn on and go. So, that item is listed in the consent agenda for approval tonight, and then, obviously, that was consensus of the committee to approve that purchase. So, the next one we've got is the wide-area network, so basically, our internet service for the school system. So, kind of similar story here. So, again, Rebecca and Rebel did a ton of work on this one. There's information in the packet for full review, so there's a lot of information there on selection of this service. Just briefly about our discussion, so we talked about the decision to actually go with a more expensive current provider versus, we did have a cheaper option that was on the table. And in the scoring matrix that Rebecca and Rebel did, the thing that separated those was prior experience with these companies, right? So, they did provide us with references for both of those companies, and noted that the potential, I guess what I'll call the potential new one, had recently been selected to service their first school district, and ran into some issues with timing and, I guess, contract timing. So, it's kind of leaving that school behind the eight ball for internet service. I'll just, I guess, put it that way. So, would also like to highlight that selecting a new provider for internet service would require, basically, the county to be dug up to have new fiber lines connecting the schools to the central office, so there would be a lot of disruption in the community for that. And then, also, it was noted that the current provider really provides us with some top-notch customer service, and they have proven throughout their current contract to be fully committed to monitoring our network, and they go to, or have went to, extreme lengths to resolve any issues. And there were some specific examples of that given. I won't dive all the way into that, but they do a really great job for us. So, basically, it was the consensus recommendation of both Finance and Facilities and Technologies Committees, so this was presented before both. So, consensus of both committees to approve a five-year contract with four one-year optional extensions in the amount of $218,475.96 per year. And one other note I wanted to mention was since we have talked about potentially needing some new schools in the future, this contract does have a provision to add additional sites. This item is also on the consent agenda for tonight. That is all I have for Facilities and Technology. So, the next meeting will be held on April 25th at 4:30 PM in the Heinz Education Building.
Just a suggestion, since it's two of you on the committee, you might want to get Jamie to help you sometimes, so you don't worry yourself out. I do have a question. I'll ask any board member, does anyone else have a question in him? Because he's on the consent agenda, so if you've got questions, now's the time.
Just the one notation was in the minutes that the Title I funds were going to fund the majority of these, with the exception being LEC. Do you know the funding source for the remainder of the LEC boards? Sorry.
I do not.
Ms. Kelly knows everything. Ms. Jones.
I'm assuming it's from Technology, General Fund, but...
We're actually going to use their school allotments from Central Office, the money that we allot to the schools.
Okay. For that. I assume it's a much smaller, out of those 71 panels, they're only asking for maybe, what, three, four, five, something like that?
I'm not sure of the exact number, but that is where that money is coming from.
Okay, so it's coming from them. Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
And the one question I had was, what are you going to do with all the stuff that's in the Jonesboro site? Does there not be any use for storage?
So, I'm not aware of much of value that's there currently. Dr. Bryan, I don't know if you have info there.
Okay. All right.
And I guess, Madam Chair, real quick, Jamie brought to my attention, I think I had my date wrong for the next meeting. I said April 25th. I believe that's March 25th, but I may need to get back to you and make sure that's correct.
Patrick, you still with us, sir? Okay.
I am.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. And next, we have Policy. And before he starts, I'd like to clarify, when I am discussing about the audit process and those finance, I don't want to seem like I'm fussing at you guys, I just hold you highly accountable for the positions you hold, and I'll be more than glad to go over some of those policies with you, how we can correct those issues, and we'll make sure that, have Ms. Kelly with us as well.
Got it.
And he did Finance. Did you do Finance to get Hayden together?
No, that was all Facilities.
Oh. Wow.
So, Finance is a bit shorter. So, in the Finance Committee, we received our monthly COVID funding update that is available for review. Again, there is an updated chart, along with the previous month's spending in the agenda packet. And again, there were a couple of questions that I asked there that we will discuss on So, the next thing was based on some direct feedback that I have received from some teachers, TAs, and administrators. We did have a discussion about the coupling of teacher assistant and bus driver positions. So, a little bit of detail there for you. Mr. Cagle attended and gave us some information regarding the history of that decision and some of the benefits, really pros and cons of it. We did discuss some alternatives that, you know, from neighboring counties and how those alternatives affect their bus driver situation compared to Lee County. The short story that I took away is that we would really like to find a way to decouple those positions, so that TAs have the option to drive rather than a requirement, but that's not going to be an easy task to do that while also ensuring that we don't shoot ourselves in the foot with daily bus routes and making sure that those are covered. So, this topic will come up for discussion again going forward, and we hope to come up with some kind of solution. And again, if there's any board action needed to assist with that, that will be brought to the board for consideration. The next thing is we had some discussion on the performance audit and the board legal representation RFPs. The performance audit is on the agenda tonight under New Business, and I believe everybody now on the board has been provided with the proposals for legal representation for review. The Finance Committee also discussed the ClearTouch interactive panels request and the wide-area network contracts, covered both of those and Facilities. And then, I just have a small list of FYI items that were discussed and are available in the packet for review, and that is classroom coverage report, board attorney invoice, the monthly financial report, and monthly board expense summary. So, the next Finance Committee meeting will be held on March 30th at 5:00 PM in the Heinz Education Building. And then, I will also note that we do have some open budget work sessions here at 5:00 PM on both March 16th and 20th. That's all I've got.
Just one quick announcement, Susan Britt also has the finance books. They're books that has all our classes. For some of you that might want to take those video classes before the budget workshop, she's graciously printed those things for us as well. Okay. Next, we have Policy.
Yes, Madam Chair. So, we had our last policy meeting, I believe it was February 28th, I believe. Is that correct? 21st, I'm sorry, at the Heinz Education Building. And so, we had four policies that's actually going to be on the consent agenda, this up for second reading. One of them was Policy 1305, Parents' Bill of Rights, where it was the consensus of the committee to correct the cross-reference policies to Student Health Services Policy 4520 and 6120, and the Student Records Policy 4700. And to add, in the first paragraph, that this policy applies to the parents, legal guardians, and legal custodians of students who are under 18 years old and are not married. And also included is the last sentence to Section 2B1, this information is not applied to time-sensitive safety measures, such as threat assessments and suicide risk rating scales that are used in the school system. Policy 2123, which is also on the consent agenda, Board Member Opportunities for Development. It was the consensus of the committee to change some wording from should to shall in some of the policy. And include Policy 2130, Board Member Compensation Expenses and Travel as a cross-reference in that policy. And then, in Policy 2130, Board Member Compensation and Expenses and Travel. And after discussing that policy, it was the consensus of the committee to include a request for travel training form as a link in Policy 2130 that anybody doing any kind of training could actually have, go to the link and fill out that form for the requested travel or whatever they needed. And 7305, Code of Ethics, there were some changes in that as well, some wording that was added and some wording that was taken out, strike-throughs, basically, just changes of wording is all that was in 7305. And then, of course... And then, of course, we had a required policy revisions, which was Student Insurance Program, the Child Abuse Related Threats to Child Safety, and Code of Student Conduct, Student Wellness, and then we, there was some COVID-19 language that was in some of the policies that we removed from that, from those policies, that was put in temporary during the COVID-19 thing. And then we had, lastly, but 7510 was just some editorial changes on the policy on leave for submission to the board just before y'all tonight. And so that's all I got on that report, and our next meeting will be March 28th at 5:00 PM in the Assembly Room Basement at the Heinz Educational Building.
Next we go to our action items, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next we go to unfinished business, and that would be our, the policies for the second reading.
So Madam Chair, just stated in the original, I make a recommendation that these policies, let me go back to my screen here, that policies 1305, 4130, 7241, and 7305 be approved for second reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, here no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say nay. Patrick, if we don't hear you, we're going to assume you're voting with us.
That's mine.
Okay. Okay. Next we have is new business, and we're going to, it's the Lee County Student Social Media Access, and that's you, Ellen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to give you guys a bit of background on this discussion that we had in the Facilities and Technology Meeting. So we had this discussion regarding the ability to access social media via the school's Wi-Fi system. There were a couple of main points that drove us having that conversation, the first being safety and distractions of students, so I think it's no secret to anybody that social media is, I'm going to call it a cesspool, there's bullying and all kinds of issues with that that we're aware of, and then, you know, potential discussions, discussions, potential distractions in the classroom if students are accessing social media. So obviously, we are aware that students can access social media via their self-service plan, but however, it seems like allowing them to access over our Wi-Fi is us condoning a known problem. So that was the first part of the discussion. The second question was related to bandwidth usage, so I guess the specific question there was, does social media access take enough bandwidth that it causes issues with things such as testing, for example? So again, Rebecca and Rebel went to work on that for us to pull us some data, and the short answer there is no, it does not provide a bandwidth usage issue. Less than 6% of the internet traffic is social media, and we currently use as a district approximately 50% of the available bandwidth we have, so, so no, it is not an issue of bandwidth. So the only social media sites that are currently available on any networks in the schools are Facebook and Twitter. Students and teachers currently access Wi-Fi for personal devices on the same network, except for there is a new program being piloted at two current schools where that is split into separate student network and staff network. So there is a timeline available in the packet that we were provided, again by Rebel and Rebecca, that puts a timeline for that to be extended to the rest of the school system. So middle and high schools will all have that split network by March 30th, and elementary schools are expected to be included in that split by April 30th. So there was mention at committee that some teachers could use, probably Messenger specifically, I believe, for communication with parents. So with that, it was the consensus of the committee to block that social media access from student Wi-Fi in the schools with those split networks, and then extend that block as the schools are brought online with the split networks going forward, if that makes sense.
And when are they coming online?
So again, the middle and high schools will be completed by March 30th, according to our timeline, and then elementary will be completed by the end of April. So a couple of weeks out for middle and high.
Is there any way to determine, when we are talking about social media usage and bandwidth, is there any way at this point to determine whether it's staff access for educational purposes versus student access for, like you said, destructive purposes? Is there any way to get? Sorry, Rebel, that might be a you question.
Say, I can take a stab at it, but I don't know if it'd be right.
The only reason I ask this is I just happened to remember, and of course, everything seems like it's during COVID, there were certain TikToks that were teaching multiplication tables, and I remember my little girl seeing those, and I know that the teacher provided those. That being said, I'm assuming that that could be downloaded and used as a resource, it just couldn't be live accessed.
Correct, correct, yes ma'am, yeah, it could be. And a lot of that content that you see on like TikTok, you know, that's being sourced from another site, you know, it's not the original post of it, so for sure. To get back to your original question, there's no way to really differentiate that from a network monitoring standpoint, all that traffic is encrypted, so as far as the visibility into the specific content that a user is seeing, there's like really no way to know that. Once we do have the segmentation in place, there will be an easier way to view like the overall consumption at a per-staff basis and a per-student basis, but as far as getting that granular to see a very specific, like what they're doing at that moment, that doesn't exist right now.
I was trying to figure out if there was, I guess when we did some discussion about what resources students and teachers could use for communication, like Remind is a pretty much agreeable method of contact, but we said things like Facebook Messenger were questionable because really teachers and students shouldn't be Facebook friends. So we spent a lot of time writing those policies about what would be justifiable friendship on social media and so forth. So with these vans, I just, we talked to a lot of teachers before we made those decisions, and it did a very deliberative process through the policy committee. And so with this one, I was wondering if there was any way to verify that we weren't just by April cutting off access to what a teacher is using instructionally? Have the teachers been consulted, or are they already kind of blocked at this point?
So the way, the way that we discussed in committee was to maintain that teacher access over the teacher network, and this would just be a student block.
Okay, so in the future with the split network, teachers will remain with access? Okay, I didn't totally catch that the first time.
Yes ma'am, yeah, and like Mr. Remmel said, we have already turned this on at the high schools, and that has definitely been a very slow rollout process, and, you know, making sure that we're not negatively impacting any communications with staff or anything like that. I have not heard of any complaints since we have gone live with it at the two high schools, but yeah, it does seem to be working well there so far.
Do you know what time, what date wise that original rollout at the high school was?
I don't recall offhand, but I can definitely go back in my emails and find that exact day for you.
The reason I ask, I wonder, did it precede any of these lockdowns that we've had to have, or was it after that point?
It would have been prior to any of the most recent ones, yes ma'am, definitely, easily a couple of months ago, for sure, yes ma'am.
So certainly nothing we did has interfered with parent-child communication in emergen, because you know that's what you're going to hear, is will I be able to reach my child if there's an emergency? And the answer is, have you been able to so far? If so, that's not going to change. Thank you.
If I may add one more thing, when we were talking about communication from teachers, it was specifically teachers to parents and parents to teachers through Messenger or those types of avenues, it wasn't, we're not advocating for any change to the student, teacher-to-student communication policies or anything like that, those all remain the same.
Perfect.
And my challenge would be if the Messenger is the only way that parents are able to be contacted by the school system, we may want to look into that. Multiple schools and you see on various ones and lines and things, they have eliminated all social media from all contexts for whatever reason, and you've seen various school boards trying to sue them for whatever reason, but if that's the only method of contact, that might be a problem, because you have to have email to have Facebook, you have to have a phone number, if I'm not mistaken. So if someone says Messenger's the only way I can reach them, I would just like a little bit more clarification on that part, but I think you guys are doing a great job, and it's taken you a long time to get through the process, and I commend you holding out for all that. But that's the only question I would have, is if in fact that is a complaint that a parent, teacher says, the only way I can reach a parent is through Messenger, I would like to know why, and there's multiple reasons why, and safety is my biggest concern. And there's things that you can monitor, things that you cannot monitor, do you have the ability to use the gaggle on Messenger?
No, ma'am, right now the archival system is just for email communications only.
And the reason I ask again is because we, safety always, okay. Thank you so much for everything.
Yes ma'am, thank you all.
Thanks Rebel. So Madam Chair, if I may, I can make a motion.
Okay.
So I would move that the Lee County Board of Education approve a block to all social media access from student Wi-Fi in schools with split networks, and continue that as more schools have their networks split.
I would second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Chair, I'd like to just add one thing. So I just want to give a caveat to Dr. Brian today because he run rabbits on policy, to try to see, based off the information that y'all provided, to try to see if there was a direct policy that related to, you know, contact information that would, the staff would have for students, whether it be a telephone number or whatever. And in the research that I did last night, and in the research Dr. Brian done today, there was really nothing specific, other than what you mentioned, Dr. Brian, about a form that's usually filled out by the, that the principals handle in-house. But, so I think far as a safety reason going into this with the social media on the staff side, is to, is to add another buffer into that, is to maybe create or find a policy to where we can add some buffers into that, to maybe strengthen the social media policies that's already in place, and try to strengthen those policies based off of that contact information. But I just wanted to thank Dr. Brian for going that extra mile for me today on that. Thank you.
I think that would be good to add to our next, like you said, to our next policy meeting, just to make sure that what actions we take tie back to our policy.
Yeah, so the next, at least from, because you know, I don't intend to beat you up, but I, we're all extremely accountable, if this school fails, this board fails the school. So with that being said, when you get back to policy, the ones in reference to the audit and the ones with social media, if you could please put those on your next one and utilize Sandra as much as you can before she goes, and try to go over those policies, tune them up, find them up, and then there's no further miscommunication. And you two also have the policy that has to do with finance, but you also need to talk with the finance, and that's in your little roles and responsibility things, if you don't mind. Does that make sense? Are you still with us, Patrick? We're giving you all the work. Okay, all right. All right, next we have, yeah, I thought we did. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those nay? Okay. It's, motion passes. Okay. Next we have the policies, and that is our first reading, and our lawyer has informed us that we do not have to vote on that, but if anybody would like to discuss those that are under new business, it's Policy 4220, 4240, 7212, 4300, 4540, and 6140 for first reading.
I had a quick question, if I may. Policy 40, let me get my notes here. Policy 4240, page 5, I think there might be a typo, it says, "Any administrator who knows or has a reason to believe," and I think that might need to be any administrator who knows or has reason to believe? Or does it really need to be administrator?
Sandra, did you miss that?
No, actually, we talked about it in the meeting, and that was a change that was going to be made, there was some other policy that that language came from, I don't remember the details on that. I think that's...
I'm trying to see here in the notes.
Because I brought that up too, I said it looked funny, it should have said administrator, and then there was further discussion, I don't remember what the discussion was.
This was the notes right, right here, Mr. Laudette, that Mrs. Bowen brought up. So after, after discussion, it was consensus of committee to keep the following paragraph under H. In addition to the requirements of this policy, any administrator who knows or has reason to believe that a licensed employee has engaged in conduct that would justify automatic revocation of the blah blah blah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was called, yes.
Thank you. And then I had one other question, sorry, I'm jumping back and forth here. Policy 4540, Student Health Advisory Council, it looks like that was just to remove a redundant paragraph, is that what that is? Because it's, it kind of has the same wording...
The same information in one...
A couple of paragraphs down.
Yes, yes, it was just a reverbage on that.
Those are the only two questions I have, thank you.
Where is that?
4540 was the policy, I didn't write down what page I had it on, page one probably.
Yeah, it's subsection A, first paragraph was removed.
That's it.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, I had, I guess I have more of a statement than a question about these, but, so reviewing that policy 4540 as well on the Student Health Advisory Council, I was just, obviously this is a policy I had not read before, but I was interested to learn that there is, or is supposed to be, a School Health Advisory Council, so this thing goes through and lists pretty specifically folks that are supposed to be in this advisory council, and some of the things that they're supposed to look at in reports they're supposed to bring to the board, I think, I think quarterly, I didn't highlight the area, but I was just not aware that that was a thing. So, I mean, honestly, I would ask if this is the place to ask the question, does that exist currently, or do we need to get that going? Because we talked about mental health a lot already, and it sounds like this should address that.
That is correct. I would like to remind the board that anytime we have a policy, especially if it's something, if it's a typo or spelling, the superintendent has the ability to do that on his own, so that helps there. And also remind, this is our first reading, some questions were already sent back to Dr. Waller, and I'm certain she'll get back with us and explain it a little more in process before we go to the second reading that makes it final. I'm tempting to do anything that's in the first reading before we go to the second reading, information that's gathered, I get it to the board immediately, not before the board meeting, not, you know, Thursday before the agenda goes out, and that way you can go through it, but she's going to get those reports and stuff. So you learn a lot in policy, right? Is there any other questions in reference to the policies? And I apologize, I'm not exactly certain where, it's probably something I should probably ask Steve Rawson later about where we should put those, since we don't vote on it, could it be a report item as opposed to under new business, because that falls under our action item, and I'd kind of like for us to...
Yeah, I think generally it's under the...
All right, thank you. Next we have the Evergreen Solution, that is the performance audit. I guess I'm briefing on that one. So the performance audit, as you guys know, we have, we've already approved for him to go out and take bids and stuff, and what I did was I took the old performance audit that we had back in 2011 that came where the county commissioner started, and then we actually put in, Dr. Brian put out a proposal for us, and that will cover a lot of areas, and then I really do believe that this will definitely help our school system. Before we went to this one, I thought it would be better, history doesn't always repeat itself, but sometimes it rhymes, so I took the liberty of taking the old one, printing, marking it up, all the areas and things that we could actually improve on before we go to this proposal. things that we could actually improve on before we go to this proposal. My only concern with this proposal as is, is there is something called a final invest, and that's where you can sit down with them and say, "I want the best price for what we're getting." And we can also, there are steps and phases, for those of you, if you've had time to read through the back, there's steps and phases to it. But I would like for the board to consider, since you, you already have all these documents a long time ago, but as going ahead and getting started on this performance audit, the sooner we get on it, I believe it's better. And just remind people that once it comes out, it's not anything personal, and I don't want people to take it personal, we're trying to learn to be better, you know? And so with that being said, if y'all have any questions in reference to this, or how they've done it, or how the proposal process went through, Dr. Bryan would have those answers for that part. And I believe the estimate came back through finance. And they can start whenever we tell them is their good time. So...
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the Evergreen Solutions LLC performance audit base price of $135,000 to be paid from fund balance and to authorize the chair to enter into negotiations to finalize the project's scope and price.
Second.
Yes, not to exceed 135,000. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any more discussion?
I guess, I mean, just for me, from reviewing this proposal, Madam Chair, I'd just like to mention, so as far as that, you know, tightening up the project's scope, as you mentioned already, the RFP, or, so I guess the proposal we received mentioned that the RFP was a bit vague in the area of the program performance audit. So we have made that request to receive the list of programs throughout the district, and will need to, so I think step one of the work within this proposal is to basically nail down that scope of work, to identify all the things that'll be looked at. So again, that's just to kind of note that that request has been made for those, the list of programs, so that we can then determine which ones need to be in the final work scope.
Well, during the deliberation process, I never go alone, so we'll have a lawyer. And if you guys have anything in there at all, that it's something that you think this is very important, just send it, let us know, and we'll make sure it's a part of that audit, if everyone agrees with that.
I had a quick question, if I could. How many, from a time perspective, was the scope of this audit? I mean, is it going back two years, four years? How far back is it going? And is there an opportunity to save some money? I guess I question what we can glean pre-COVID, that so much has changed since then. And so I'm wondering if, if a limited scope of two or three years would save some money for the, for the board and for the school system and still be effective?
Yes. And if you, the proposal, I believe it's in there as well. Dr. Bryan sent the proposal out, and they sat down and they talked with us and they go through each step where we should, and, or things that they think would, would help us in the future as far as the performance audit goes, and how we can do better practices. And so I'm, I thought that it had a two-year on here. I thought it only went back two years. Is that correct, Dr. Bryan? Okay. It only went back two years.
Okay.
And with that being said, I know next month, when you have questions and stuff about the audit, I would, I would like to reassure the board and the community as well, everyone at Lee County Schools is doing their best to be transparent about things, and that is a part of this performance audit, so we do not need our auditor to come back. I don't, once you read the second half of this, that's something that they can cover at the same time, and then everything's cleared and, and we can move forward. But I think, I think, I'm pretty sure it said two years, but I don't have, this one was two years back.
I didn't see it, but I could have missed it. So thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, Patrick, was that opposed or for?
Aye.
So delayed. Okay. And so now we will go to board comments. Would you like to go first, Patrick?
No, thank you. I'll waive my comments this time.
Okay, thank you. Sandra, would you like to go?
Certainly. My comments are very brief this evening. I just want to thank the board, and I had my list, but it's on my phone. I'm not going to pull that out right now. I will be leaving the end of the month to travel to the COSBA conference and have set aside a lot of great training, a lot of connections with school districts from across the country, as well as leaders from all different levels of the state. I hope that in my attempt to share the information gleaned from my latest Board of Directors meeting, I was able to share some information on the shared side. I hope you took the time to read that. The School Boards Association is working very hard in advocacy for the school system, and there were several different issues that you're going to begin to hear about in the news over the next little bit. And just as a constant reminder that we are the advocates for the public school system. And it's a, it's an interesting time to be involved in education. There's a lot going on, and I look forward to connecting with others who are experiencing some of the same struggles, but also reaping some of the rewards and having the big wins. And so learning from what other school systems and districts are doing outside of North Carolina and, and bringing some of that back to us. I appreciate the board's willingness to support that endeavor, and I look forward to reporting back to the board at the next available opportunity. Thank you.
Very brief closing comments. Number one, I would like to thank all the unknowns in the school system that are not seen on a daily basis, but do a lot of hard work. So I want to give a shout out to all of those. Secondly, while discussed in, in our policy meeting, is something that a lot of parents has brought up, and me and Dr. Bryan has talked about it briefly, but it's about the, in the health and wellness that we just had over in policy, it was on the nutrition program in our schools. And trying to see if we can come together as a community to provide a more sound breakfast and lunch to these children, and to have some kind of way to, for these kids that are, may not, may not only get but one meal a day, to have some kind of, something to where, instead of the leftovers getting thrown away, that they can come and get a box after school to take home, instead of throwing them in the dumpster. So just wanted to give a shout out to that, that, to the parents that we are, that is in the radar, and we will begin working on that to try to make that better. Thank you, Madam Chair. As has already been mentioned, thank all our teachers, faculty, and staff for all that they do, and for the long hours that they put in, and for their desire for each of their students to be successful. It's been amazing that we've been talking about mental health for several months, and it's becoming more and more prominent to more and more people, that there is a great need. And so I'm glad that we have been having the conversation, that many of us on this board are concerned about that, and I look forward to continuing to have conversations to how we can be proactive in stopping some things that could happen. I feel like that, made mention to this someone today, that I feel like that, looking back, advocating for, for mental health counselors in our schools is going to be as important as it was when we placed SROs in all of our schools, because this is an issue that we're going to be dealing with for a long time. And so I'm glad that the ball is moving, and I look forward to having more conversations around this subject, because I think it is that big an issue. And I appreciate all those that are concerned, and I look forward to working with this board about being more proactive in the days ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at every meeting since my swearing-in, I've asked for feedback and participation from school staff and parents, and I've received quite a bit of feedback about my comments from January's restorative justice discussion, specifically related to my statements about teaching morals, and I wanted to touch on that just briefly. So I'm not a politician. I am not a trained public speaker, and I'm definitely not perfect. It's not easy to sit up here and try to get everything that's up there and everything that's in here stated perfectly in just a few minutes, a few minutes of a solo speech, especially when we're not really supposed to engage in back and forth up here, right? So I appreciate those who have reached out, and especially those who have engaged in discussion to talk more in depth about the role teachers play in discussing, in the discussion of teaching morals. So I do believe that it certainly takes a village to raise a child, and I wasn't suggesting or did not intend to suggest that teacher-student relationships should be like a drill sergeant and a soldier, but it's also not like a parent-child relationship either. So aside from that personal note, we've got a lot of big things going on at the board level. There's a lot of discussions that have been started that I believe have possibly been ignored in the past, because it does take a lot of work to prepare for those discussions, a lot of work to work through those and talk through those, and then to get to a point where you can make decisions. So that's, there's a lot of work there that most people will probably never see and may not realize the hours spent to complete that behind the scenes. And just a quick list, it's not all exhaustive. We've got budget season coming up, capacity planning, you know, even Chris just mentioned food and nutrition discussion. We've got policy updates and creation, discipline conversations, safety conversations, staffing and employee morale, student and staff mental health, evaluation and goal-setting tool creation. And that's, that's not even all of it. That's just a few. So all these things and more actively being discussed and worked, but not just in the meeting that we're sitting at today, but at the committee-level meetings. So my request would be if any of those things interest anybody that's listening, school staff, or parents, or whoever, check out our website, find the time and place for the meetings that you're interested in and show up. We welcome anyone to come and be part of those discussions, or you can just listen and see what we're doing. Either way is fine. And again, just want to extend a thanks to those who have been reaching out and providing feedback in several of those areas that I just mentioned already. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quick, I know Dr. Bryan mentioned Quiz Bowls and art displays, and a lot of great things going on in our, our school district. I was able to attend the National Honor Society induction at Lee County High School last week. We had about 50 young men and women get inducted into that organization. I think Southern Lee had their inductions in the fall. And I was able to attend the Beta Club inductions at Lee County High School last week also, another 50 young men and women. Those are two great organizations, extracurricular organizations. I think extracurriculars are so important in our, in the overall education of a, of a student. So I'm excited to see maybe some of those extracurriculars come back a little bit. We also had our NAF academies compete at Skills USA in the regionals to talk about some of the CTE programs that we have, Lee County and Southern Lee, and I believe about a dozen young men and women made it out of regionals and are going to state, so that was exciting too. And then I wanted to recognize Coach Reggie Peace for receiving the Wooden Legacy Award. That's an amazing accomplishment over here at Lee County High School. And Kirby Forbes finally, last and certainly not least, perhaps the biggest accomplishment is runner-up for the North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year. And I just want to mention Patricia Cauldron, who runs our beginning teacher program. It's second to none. I'll put it up against any beginning teacher program in the area, perhaps in the state. So she, she does a great job with that and deserves to be recognized. But a lot of good things going on in Lee County schools, and a lot of things to be excited for. Thank you.
I like to say that sometimes when we work together as a board, people don't actually see what goes on behind the scenes. I have never been on a board that has worked this many hours, this long, and done so much research, and they just keep taking. And I think it was kind of funny when you said something about the drill sergeant in the Army kind of thing, and you looked straight at me, because they're learning my personality type is, the same person who is going to come at you and say, "We need to do this and this," will also be the one that's got your back, and I'd go to battle with any of you sitting on this table, including Patrick back there. And we do miss you, Patrick. We want you to know that our prayers are with you and your family right now. And we're going to go to closed session in a minute. So Patrick, before we go into closed session, I want to remind you to meet us in closed session if you can. So if someone would like to make the motion.
Madam Chair, I move that Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under NCGS 143-318 dot 11, A1, A3, and A6, to discuss confidential student information under NCGS 115C dash 402, to discuss confidential personnel information under NCGS 115C dash 319 and 115C dash 321, and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. In closed session. All right.
We're back in open session. Patrick, can you hear, sir? We're now open. Would a board member care to make a motion?
Madam Chairman.
Oh goodness.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the Human Resources report.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve additional funding to support the previously approved external investigation, not to exceed $15,000 or a grand total of $30,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Patrick, would you like to make the final motion?
Motion that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye. Thank you.